...declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the governor's emergency order number 12 pursuant to executive order 2020-04 that to properly ensure the safety of the public and that of several of the board members who are within the CDC guidelines needing to take special precautions. I'm not going to read it again. This public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note, there's no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming we are. We are utilizing a teleconference service for this electronic meeting. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public may join this electronic meeting by calling 1-857-444-0744 and use the code 649-427. At this time, we'll do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic and to the states. I would point out that our fifth school board member, Pepper Ring, is on the screen and participating in the meeting. Board member updates. Ginny, anything from the Budget Committee?
Budget Committee starts tonight reviewing the town budget and is arriving at the Budget Committee on December 4th. And so they're really there working, doing everything right.
Wellness Committee, Andrea? School Boards Association, nothing. Learning Collaborative, Frank, nothing. Rec Department, Andrea?
The fall programs are Monday, 3:00, hockey, Tuesday, outdoor recess. I mean, they've got a number of programs going on. Seniors, acrylic painting Tuesday and Thursday at Tuck, open pickleball on Wednesday. I mean, they have a ton of things going on. Just call the Rec Department. I mean, it's like crazy that they have so much stuff going on. And right now, obviously, they're looking forward to people giving ideas for the Christmas, sorry, the Christmas, how are we going to do the lighting and things like that. There's a lot of things that are happening that we can get involved with as a community for the tree, you know, to take place of the tree lighting or whatever. I mean, there's just a lot of things. Drive-through lighting. Anyway, there's just a lot of things going on. Just get in touch with your Rec Department person, and I think it's going to be great.
Thank you. And I know we have Renee here. We'll get to you in just a minute.
Yeah, he'll give us more detail.
Policy, Andrea and Pepper, anything?
No.
No? PTA, Ginny?
Yes, PTA is doing a point set-a-sale. They have information on their website. They also have it on Facebook. You can order a small plant or a large plant, and they appreciate your helping them with this sale.
Curriculum, Andrea?
No, nothing right now.
Okay. Let's see. Why don't we move right to you, Renee, if you want to come up to that microphone? And the folks in the back who are taping this, can you check his microphone and make sure it's working? Hold on, Renee, just a minute. I hope they can come out.
I can check. Go ahead.
You don't want to have to do it twice.
Well, it's passed. Won't it work?
Okay, you're good.
All right, so I'm going to try to make this quick. I know there's a lot going on tonight. I just want to thank you for, one, meeting with me, and, two, with all the cooperation we've had over the last summer with SAU and all of the community participation we've had from the Rec Department and all of the parents and kids in town. A quick background of what I'm looking for. HYA was here last month, and I know Mr. Shepherd mentioned that if we were to request usage of the facilities, that we would do it, you would do it on a case-by-case basis. We historically run multiple programs in the school gyms for youth to adults. And I know right now, given the time that you guys are dealing with, the COVID problems and the protocols and who you want in and out, I just am here kind of to say, the Rec Department has a bunch of programs we are ready to run and safely under the COVID protocols. We just are looking for space. Historically, we've used the academy gym for men's basketball. We've also used it for adult pickleball, or adult recess, I'm sorry. And some of those things are a little more in-depth than others. Pickleball, you can social distance, you can stay away, you can use your own equipment, and there's very little touch points. Basketball's a little different. We are following the state guidelines on these programs if we can run them. We will now have a staffed employee there doing temperature checks and all of the protocols that we need to do to try to run these as safely as possible. I do understand the school has an interest in keeping their facilities safe, and we appreciate that concept, and you guys have done amazing so far. So I'm just kind of saying when and if you guys do decide to open things up to outside groups, that we are willing to participate and join with you and do them safely and help out any way we can. So I know on the thing it says I'm looking for outdoor space, but it's really, I'm just kind of tag teaming the HYA concept of using the facilities.
Right.
And I know that's touchy, and as numbers are going up and everything else, it's a...
So I'm fairly certain that I speak for the board, that everyone on this board appreciates the Rec Department programs. And now I'll open it up to the board for questions of Renee. Anyone have any questions?
Well, I might as well start. What protocols have you looked in taking place for safety if you run these programs? Besides temperature check?
Right.
Were you looking at other people coming from the outside into the areas?
Well, this is where I'm a little hesitant here, because if we have adults come in, I know we want to try to probably keep the youth involved in the schools, and if they have access to the gym, you know. The protocols, depending on the sport or the activity, totally change. The seniors that I'm talking about and the adults, it's a different program. We can social distance, we can do cleaning protocols. We have one of those new machines that Keith Lussard mentioned last time where the, I forget the technical term of it.
Electrostatic.
The hydrostatic, thank you. So before and after, we have the hand sanitizer for people as they come in, we have the hand sanitizer when they leave, we can use the machine on all of our equipment and any of the equipment in the gyms. That may change depending on the event. If it's a craft class or something where we have a different facility, it's whatever protocols Keith wants on the school side along with what we have in place.
What about spectators?
We don't, our programs, we won't have any. It'll just be the participants themselves, and then when it's pickup time, they'll be outside.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Renee? What I'd like to do is not take any action right now. We may take some action tonight, but I'd like to hear from a couple other people first. So, thank you, and I think we might be talking to you again in a little bit.
No problem.
Renee, is it only Hampton residents that use your programs?
We sometimes have out-of-town residents historically. This summer and this fall, we've tightened up the ship a little bit. So we're mostly, with the exception of the adult painting class, we've had all Hampton kids.
Okay.
So one of the reasons I'd like to defer action on this is because I think we're going to get a request from Jim Dougherty. Jim, do you want to come on up and talk about Jim uses for...
And Keith is going to address it as well. Keith is going to address it as well.
And Keith, I think you're going to talk about this also?
So, I mean, ultimately, it's up to the board to decide. So I'm Jim Dougherty, Athletic Director at Hampton Academy. I think you guys all know me. So what I wanted to talk about was winter sports. Obviously, we didn't have a fall sports program. So as Athletic Director, I was asked to really just explore what our options would be for winter sports. And really, in researching it, there's a few options that we have. So the factors that we consider, there's quite a bit, obviously, that go into it, but one, are there guidelines? I heard you guys, Mr. DeLuca, say, are there guidelines to follow? Yeah, we have pretty stringent detailed guidelines from the National Federation of High Schools, and I can pass those out to the board members so that you guys can check those out. Number two would be our facility. Is our facility safe? You know, there's some area gyms that the air movement isn't great. It's small, and it wouldn't be safe, so we consider that. We also consider our coaching staff. That's a big one for kids. Do we have an experienced coaching staff for our sports? So we have three potential sports for winter that we have to consider: wrestling, boys and girls basketball. So start with wrestling. Wrestling would be classified as a high-risk winter sport, a lot of contact, obviously. In terms of guidelines, we do have stringent guidelines. However, in terms of facilities, while we have disinfectant for the mats, the contact that's really involved in wrestling, we could never guarantee, you know, transmission, just is such a high risk. It's something that would be really, I'd be concerned with. In terms of coaching, we're in between coaches right now. So if we opted to go with a wrestling program, we'd have to find a coach, and that's a concern. We need experienced people if we're going to do a sports program with kids. So, I mean, my recommendation is I'd recommend not pursuing wrestling for the winter season. Boys and girls basketball, that's classified as a moderate risk. So it's a level down. There is contact, there's a pretty good degree of contact, but it's not like wrestling and football and lacrosse. In terms of facilities, as you know, we have a large gym, great air movement and a lot of space. So that kind of lends itself to actually exploring it. Three would be coaching, and we are lucky. We have a couple of really experienced and motivated coaches who would like to see it happen. So that's half of the battle. So in terms of recommendations, I would just ask the board to consider three possible options. One would be canceling. That's obviously an option. There are some school districts that have canceled already, and we could certainly follow suit if you think that's the safest thing. Number two would be an intramural schedule, where we choose a boys and girls team of, say, 15 to 18 kids, divide into subgroups, and play amongst ourselves. So we could do co-ed basketball at the Hampton Academy level. Some area schools, such as Exeter Co-op and Rye, did that in the fall. So it's not unprecedented to do that. And then third would be a limited season in schedule. So I'm never going to propose, I'm not going to propose tonight a complete schedule as we planned earlier in the year. What I would propose is a limited season in schedule that would start late, it would start in January, and it would run about six weeks. Normally, we go from mid-November to mid-March. So a condensed schedule with a limited amount of games, following carefully the guidelines that are in place by the National Federation of High Schools. So those are your three options.
Okay. Questions from the board?
Got questions.
Right?
You mentioned three sports. I only heard wrestling and basketball.
Boys and girls basketball.
Oh, okay, so you separated that too.
Yeah, I break those down into...
Okay. And the second is, what about, I understand about participants.
Mm-hmm.
What about spectators?
So again, we would follow the guidelines, and you guys would set what you think you should see. The guidelines, say, if you're playing sports, they would allow up to 50 spectators in the gym, but you could obviously cancel that as well. It's completely up to what the board thinks, you know, is the safest course of measure.
I have a question for you. Have you recently had any Seacoast ADs meetings?
We're, no, we're communicating completely through email.
Okay.
Yep.
What are other middle schools that you typically play? The Exeters, Portsmouth, Seabrook, Hampton Falls, North Hampton, what are they doing? I mean, would you have opponents?
They're waiting for their school boards. So that's kind of what we're doing, is we wait for the school board to react, and then they notify everybody else. So all I'm really getting are cancellations right now. I know that Exeter did participate in sports in the fall, and I'm waiting to hear from them. Rye canceled their winter sports after doing intramurals in the fall. Sacred Heart has canceled their sports, and Fremont has canceled their sports. So there's three area schools that we play that have canceled already, and I'm waiting to hear from the rest of them. They're doing what I'm doing, they're going before their boards and discussing it.
Okay. Any other questions for Jim from the board?
Could you do a, lack of a better term, hybrid? Where you did a few weeks with intramural and then maybe do a limited season with three or four teams?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We have coaches who want to see basketball. They think it would be good for the kids.
Okay.
They think it would be healthy when done the right way.
All right.
And I think that to start with an intramural and then monitor it closely, make sure it's safe, and then proceed with the schedule would be something that would be very viable. Anything that I do, anything that I would propose in terms of a schedule would be very close to the school. I wouldn't propose traveling far like we normally do. I would propose playing Exeter Co-op and Seabrook in schools that are really close and not going to, like Dover, New Hampshire, and Rochester like we normally do in a season, but keeping things close to home.
So have you spoken with Keith Lussard, our facilities person, about this?
Nope, nope. In terms of a plan, no, it would be more what you guys vote tonight and then move forward with Keith.
Keith, could we get your two cents worth on this and the rec request? Two for one?
Before we go there, can I ask him one more question?
Sure.
In your opinion, okay, as an educator and as a director of sports for the academy, are the kids getting covert fever where they need to release some of this energy in sports?
Yeah, I think sports would be a good, that's a great question, Mr. DeLuca. I think sports is a really good outlet for the kids. If you've walked the field, when we do our mass breaks, you see some of the energy that our kids are exhibiting out there. They need to get out and they need to move around. They're definitely taking advantage of other sports on the seacoast that have been offered, and I think that that's offered a good model of sports that have been done safely. A number of our kids are participating in club soccer and club cross-country and volleyball, and they've done so safely, they haven't transmitted back here. So I think that bodes well to us having sports, that they've been able to do that. But I think for peace of mind and healthy minds for kids, trying it on a small scale and trying it with two sports would be a great start, would be a really, I think, viable option right now. With keeping in mind that we could close it down at any time, we could set the guidelines that, you know, if there's an infection, we close it down until everybody's quarantined and then make a decision of when we would go forward. But it would have to be with, obviously, really strict guidelines, I feel.
So typically, and I know we haven't had the new gym all that long, how would the teams practice? Are they both going at the same time and each taking half a gym? Are they going to split the time?
Well, even the way we did it last year, Mr. Shepherd, was one team goes in till from 2:30 to 4:00, and then another team comes in after that, and that's what we would do. I would also ask to consider adding an assistant coach to each of the girls and boys teams, so we have two sets of adult eyes monitoring the kids and reinforcing with masks. Financially, we did not use assistant coach or coaching stipends in the fall, so there are two things that we could push forward to the winter sports that are still in the budget and would offer an additional measure of safety for the kids.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so now I'm going to go back to Renee. So I'm guessing Monday through Friday, let's just say we go forward with this, you would be using the gyms until when for practices?
The, normally, we're out of the gym for practices by 5:30, and normally, games would go till about 6:00.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, and that's pretty consistent with how we backed up with Renee's leagues and with HYA in the past.
Okay, so that would work for you. Okay. Sorry, Keith, now we need you. So Keith, you're our facilities manager. You've heard the two requests. Your thoughts, your input?
Obviously compelling arguments. Good evening, everybody. So I've been asked to talk to the school board tonight about visitors and groups requesting use of school buildings during COVID-19 pandemic. We're in a very difficult place because we're balancing the needs to educate our students while providing a clean, safe, and healthy buildings. Increased cases of COVID-19 within the state of New Hampshire and in Hampton is something that we look at every day, the dashboard and how the numbers are increasing. But let me keep reading my bullet points, because I know right now I'm not going to be very popular with anybody. I want to apologize first. We have concerns with outside visitors entering the school buildings. This increase is everybody's risk of contracting COVID-19, especially with the rising numbers around our communities and with our neighboring schools. The holiday travel that's coming up now, we've got Veterans Day, we've got Thanksgiving Week, we've got Christmas and New Year's vacations. Plus on top of that, we have the cold and flu season. We have been fairly successful so far following CDC guidelines in New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services protocols at SAU 90. Maybe the best way to keep, I just want everybody to know, this breaks my heart, the best way to keep Hampton students in their seats, behind their desk, in their classrooms, is to continue this practice of the hybrid model. We know there's light at the end of the tunnel. We saw on the news there are two vaccines that are coming down the path. It is very difficult to be in this messenger position that I'm in. However, in my opinion, this is the best practice, the hybrid model. That includes our continuing practice of limiting outside visitors, which would sadly, and I mean, it breaks my heart, include sports and all outside organizations in the buildings. And that we should review this outside visitor use again at the end of the second trimester in February or March. And I say this with brutal honesty and trying to make sure it is the safest for the education. I know there are intangibles that students and adults get by interacting with each other in sports. I know I enjoy watching sports. I'm really not a great participant in sports, to be honest with everybody, but I get it. I get it, Jim. I get it, Renee. I get it, HYA. I get it, senior citizens. But we need to get through this next little hurdle. We know there's a vaccine coming. I just, I want to keep everybody safe and healthy, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Keith. Does the board have any questions for Keith?
Question?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If we move forward with the kids, is the cleaning process still able to keep up? I know we have to look back at the original approval we made for a group already, and we may have to take that back into consideration.
We may need to reconsider that.
But I know this, and I also know that the gym is a storage facility too. All right? But if we allowed the kids, our students, okay, is that a feasible possibility? Now, I've heard what you said, but I'm saying, is it a feasible possibility?
It's all a measure of risk. And of course, anything is a possibility. I'm not going to say that I'm a naysayer on everything. I do think it's very challenging right now to keep up with cleaning and sanitizing. Now that the ground is wetter, more stuff is coming in, we had a dry fall, so we haven't had to worry so much about running the vacuums as frequently and as often. It's difficult to find qualified people that are willing to take on the risk of working in a school environment with the COVID going around. We are at risk. Folks are nervous about outsiders in the building. Not everybody, but it's, if we could just get through this next very difficult season... I didn't answer your question.
Keith, that's okay.
It's okay.
All right. Just, you need to say what you truly believe, backed up with the facts that you have. You need to say what you really feel. It's okay, it's all right.
Yeah, I just...
Thank you for having the courage to speak up.
Right.
And say the things that you're worried about, because really, everyone is concerned in this school if COVID, we don't know what's going to happen. And if we can provide the safest and best possible for our students, that's what we want. So thank you for speaking up.
Yeah, thank you for having the courage to stand up there and say what a lot of people don't want to hear, but it's what it needs to be heard. So thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
It's okay.
So I'm going to swi, thank you, Keith. I'm going to switch back to Renee. Is there a date certain that you need an answer from us? Or if somehow in January things changed, we could give you a diff, an answer?
We don't have any designated timeframe. I'm just saying that we are ready and willing to use the facilities when you guys feel that it's safe to do so.
Okay.
We are running programs down at Tuck Field right now. A lot of our programs are all outside. We have very minimal indoor use right now and planning for the winter and the weather. You know, ideally, we'd have an indoor facility, but we're going to make do with what we have. And, you know, historically, we've had these facilities. I'm not saying I need it by this deadline, I'm not saying I need it by any time. I'm just saying or asking when you do feel it's safe, and, you know, a lot of it with Keith. You know, he's doing an amazing job with what he's got, and I totally respect his comments right then. We're willing to work, we're willing to do whatever. And if it comes down to just being able to use the gym, like they were mentioning, for just the academy kids, you know, we'd be willing to pretty much do whatever is asked. We just have a multiple variety of age brackets we're trying to accommodate, and we're trying to find facilities to run these things in, so. But no timeframe, we're just holding tight.
Okay, that's good to know, good to know. And next, I want to ask Jim. So do you sort of have in your mind a date certain when you would need to know for this to go? I mean, it wouldn't have to be tonight particularly.
No, absolutely not. And in fact, winter sports across the state aren't starting until December 1st. We could, we're a middle school, we can modify our start time and start any time the board deemed that it was possible.
Well, is there a time, for example, if you didn't get the go-ahead until February, is that too late?
We could put something together in February. As you know, athletically, February's dead time anyways, February and March. You know, there's not a lot going on besides basketball, so outdoor sports haven't started yet. If you gave us the gym in February and March, we'd do something with it in February and March, absolutely. If you gave us the gym in February, March, we'd do something with it in February and March. Absolutely, we'd, could do exactly what I talked about, having an intermural program or, or more. Again, depending on what you thought was appropriate.
I, I would just think that coaches would need to kind of know, et cetera.
I mean, we have one coach in-house who's a pretty motivated basketball guy, Justin Cogashaw. And he's dying to go and, and I think will modify his start time any, anytime. And the other is a teacher in Exeter, David Hivery, who's been coaching for us for a few years. And I'm not sure if he'd be willing to adapt, but Justin would certainly pick up anything that, that we needed.
All right.
All right.
Board have any more questions for Jim? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Can I just make a recommendation, small? Would it be possible to have Pepper mute her mic until, you know, we?
I think she did.
Okay, okay.
People want to take action now?
I would make a motion that we not allow any sports to take place in our gyms from, until the second, after the second semester, when we will make a decision to see how things lay there. So for December, January, and February.
Okay, so for clarification, is this?
This is HYA, Hampton Rec, and Hampton Academy. And Marston and Center, if they have sports, we don't at this point have a recommendation that says please go forward. We've been given several reasons why we can't. We all feel bad. It's not a thing against sports. It's a thing of keeping our teachers, our staff, and our kids safe.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion?
With regret.
Yeah.
Discussion?
Yes, I'd like to, and I agree with what you're saying, okay? But we've already given approval to one organization.
No, I included them in, I included them in not.
So we would have to backtrack on.
We voted on that in the past. And I'm, you know, I don't want to debate it, but we have to probably bring that up and move forward. My concern is, and I've been following the pandemic very closely. It doesn't seem to affect kids as much as adults, okay? I mean, they have been known to catch it. We've had some cases here. But they seem to, you know, rebound very quickly versus adults. I, I, I'm a little hesitant to, and I agree with outside sports, but the internal sports for the kids in Hampton, you know, which gives them a release for social and emotional benefit. You know, I, I think we need to maybe look at that a little closer. You know, because these kids have been penned up for a long time. And, you know, we're talking two sports. We're talking basketball. I, I disapprove of wrestling completely. But basketball, you know, there's not that much contact, number one. I mean, you know, they may bump into each other. Depending on the mask situation, and if we don't allow participants from the outside to come in, and I'm talking about parents, et cetera, to view the sport, it might benefit them going forward just to, because winter's coming, snow's going to be coming, they're going to be penned up. You know, so it, it's an, it's an avenue to just let them release themselves. You know?
Thank Frank. Further discussion?
I think I'd like to ask Ginny if she would, would consider or reconsider her motion to maybe January 6th? Or the following week?
How about, I think all school districts now are going with.
The Martin Luther King Holiday?
Martin Luther King Holiday.
So would you, would you consider?
Yep.
Changing your motion to, uh, January 12th?
Okay.
I think, uh.
January 16th, that's after.
January 19th is after the Martin Luther King Holiday. Would you consider changing that to January 19th?
And we can reconsider.
Maybe we could get them in sooner.
Yep.
I'd like to know.
Pepper, do you have any discussion?
I was the one last time that said, you know, no, I don't think we should do it. I was the only one, and I'm going to stick with it.
Okay, thank you.
I just feel that our kids have to be safe.
Okay.
So.
Doing the best we can with the school schedule.
Right.
And, and I think we need to stick to that.
I don't, I, I, I don't have any problems supporting, um, holding off on the athletic director's request or Renee's request. I, I, I do have a problem in that we've already given HYA permission.
I have a problem with HYA. When HYA was here, they never mentioned kids from other towns playing on, in Hampton in their gyms. They never mentioned that. And then all of a sudden, there's going to be kids from surrounding towns, and I don't think we can do that.
I'd like to speak to that. Ginny, I, I agree with your assessment of that. The thing is, I don't think that they knew that we didn't understand it was other kids. For years, it's been other kids with the Hampton kids. And I don't think we understood that when we gave approval.
Right.
So I don't think they were trying to.
Oh, I don't either.
You know, I don't think they were trying to, you know, do something underhanded.
Oh, I don't think so either.
I just think they didn't know that we didn't know that it was other kids involved.
Yeah, and I'm just not willing to take that risk with other kids being mixed in with Hampton kids.
Okay.
Is there any, is there any chance, so that we could split this up and vote? That you could amend your motion and change it a second to include?
January.
The athletic director's request and Renee's request.
To January 19th.
Act on that and then we'll deal with the other one.
I, in good conscience less, cannot say Hampton Recreation cannot use it. Hampton Academy, Hampton School District cannot use it, but HYA can. I can't in good conscience say that. That's not fair.
I'm just asking you to split your motion.
Yeah, I'll split, I'll split my motion.
Okay, so we'll.
The motion will be.
The AD and Renee.
Right.
Okay, and you're second.
And I'll second it.
Okay.
To, to January 19th.
I, I would like to just get feedback if it's doable or feasible coming from both Renee and Jim Dougherty.
They said it was early.
They said.
They said it, okay. But you, yeah, but they said the 6th, so I'm just saying, we pushed it out to the 19th.
So Renee and Jim, can you come up and say that you would be amenable to having us start whatever programs you want to do?
Possibly start.
Possibly start.
On January 19th.
Hampton Rec would be in total agreement with coming back or having you guys check back in on the 19th and deciding then whether or not we could use the gym.
Okay, so January 19th. Jim, how do you feel?
Also Hampton Academy would, would absolutely be agreeable to starting on, was it January 19th?
Tuesday, January 19th.
Tuesday, January 19th.
Possibly.
Possibly starting on, on January 19th if that's what the board deemed.
All right, that's good.
And we would revisit this at our board meeting.
January 12th, right. And we will talk to HYA and get their.
That's going to be something else.
Oh, that's another thing. You're right.
Okay, so we have a motion. This is for Jim Dougherty's from the AD at Hampton Academy and Renee from Recreation to postpone a decision for them until January.
Jan, so that they could possibly start.
January 10th?
Uh, January 12th is the board name.
January 12th.
Okay, in hopes that it would be January 19th.
All those in favor? Pepper? Yep.
Yes.
Okay, so now Ginny, because thank you for splitting that.
Okay, now I will make the motion not to allow Hampton Youth Association, HYA, to use the gym until January 19th, another decision is made based on the information that this board has at that time.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Andrea. Discussion, Frank?
Just a little discussion is, we need to, you know, if we move forward with the decision, we need to reach out to them. But the second thing is a scheduling issue that I would like to see when you're dealing with all three. You know, so there's no conflicting schedule.
Well, they would work that out, I'm sure.
I agree with Frank. It, it will be very difficult, but I think between the three entities, they will be able to work out a schedule of equal hours to be used for the gyms and such that they need.
I, I'm just going to point out that HYA came before us.
Right, right.
Made their presentation and we gave them permission. I know they've been signing kids up and they take money, et cetera, et cetera. It would be, I'm sure it would be tough for them.
But when they came here, they said if there was any change in opinion of us, of the board, that they would be happy to deal with that.
Right, right. So Ginny, is your motion to revisit HYA?
No, my motion is to deny HYA because of the information that we have received to unfortunately revoke the permission to allow HYA to use our gym.
So we would be revisiting with them on January 12th?
Until January 12th.
Until January 12th.
Until January 12th.
And you seconded that?
I did.
Okay, further discussion? Okay.
With apologies to HYA, with, yes, because we, we never meant to obviously backtrack on what we had voted on. But yeah, with apologies to HYA, we understand.
Pepper? Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor of Pepper's motion? I mean Ginny's motion, I'm sorry. I was looking at Pepper. Ginny? Pepper?
Yes.
You're in favor?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Andrea?
With regrets.
Okay. No? Abstained? None? Okay.
And while we were sitting here, I thought of another thing is we maybe want to get together with the town at some point because we just limited children from being using our facilities. But they're also planning, I believe, some, the town meeting is going to be in the auditorium. So we may want to visit that.
Do we have Lois reach out to them?
I'd be happy to.
Okay.
Yeah, because I don't know.
Okay.
I really think people need to know, this is like with regret, we, we don't want.
Right.
We are not against kids. We're not against kids using our facilities. We're not against seniors or anyone using our facilities. It's just what it is. It just, the pandemic has just forced us into some votes and decisions that we didn't want to make, but we have to in all good conscience. Done.
Can we move on to principals report? Let's start, Dave, do you have anything for us? If you don't, it's okay. That's fine. Do you have anything for us?
Well, tomorrow's Veterans Day and we won't be in school and, and we can't gather like we traditionally do. But Mrs. Reno and Mrs. Gueye are working on a performance and we'll hopefully have it ready for them. Maybe a little bit after Veterans Day, but to produce these, these virtual programs are, they take a lot of hours, but they're well worth it if you've ever seen them. We are so proud of our entire community. We, we finished nine weeks of school. We're on our 10th week. And, and it, and it's due to Mr. Lassard and Mrs. Borg and, and really the entire, everywhere, it takes a village. But honestly, the building is clean and, and that's something that is great, great solace to those people who are anxious about, about many things. But the one thing you can say about these buildings is they are clean and they are healthy because he puts his, his everything into it, as sort of his staff. So we're very much appreciative of Hampton Academy.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Nathan, anything for us?
Just quickly, it is Veterans Day tomorrow. And Mr. Carlson is planning a virtual Veterans Day assembly. We've been in contact with Burke Bennett over at the Legion Post, so we'll be sending that at the end of the month over to their organization and they can share it with their, their members as they see fit. But we still wanted to stress the importance of the holiday with the students and so, you know, Gus always does a phenomenal job in person and I'm sure the virtual one's going to be great. A friendly reminder for parents, parent teacher conferences are Tuesday, the 17th, 3:30 to 6:30 virtually. And Wednesday, the 18th, 3:30 to 6:30 virtually. If you have not received a link from your classroom teacher or interventionist, just reach out to them and, and they'll be sure to set you up.
Thank you, Nathan.
Very much.
Tim, anything?
First of all, thank you for all your support. Just like Nathan and Dave said, Veterans Day was taking care of that. Tori and Lynn are taking great pride into doing activities related to Veterans Day through the virtual ways and writing cards to soldiers and collecting things. So we're still doing some of the normal things. I just wanted to let you know that we are still having a great sense of normalcy even though we're in a hybrid. Parent conferences are going on tonight. There's just no parents in the building. They're just virtually happening. I walk through the hallways and everyone has their door. So things are happening normally. We're doing, I finished our first round of testing, the RTI testing. That is all done. Walk-throughs, observations are still happening. All the activities that normally happen in the fall continue to happen. It's just a little different, right? This has been a really tough decision and conversation tonight about large spaces of the schools. I just need to reiterate, none of the students at any time are using any of the large spaces in school. We don't use the gym. We don't use the calf. We don't use the library. We, we are managing and we're keeping students in a small cohort and it's working. So our program is working, so you all are correct. It's a very tough decision, but we are doing that in the schools as well. So it's just, it's really happening, so I want to thank you. At this point, if, if I could just have one minute, we've shifted a little bit about the structure of Center School and I want to just point out a couple of kudos if I may. The leadership roles have really shifted at Center School and there's a lot of teachers who have taken a role in the leadership. Just to name a few, LJ has taken the role of tech and running some after-school supports. Molly has taken on a new, a new role for us in reading at the school. Lynn has taken over some nice things with data. Amy, the nurse is going to speak in a second. What a job Amy has done in the leadership role at the school, informing everybody what's happening. Amanda J is doing a nice job leading in math. Kim Olson is leading the mentors. So we've, there's a big shift of leadership and what's going on. And I just wanted to let you know that I probably missed a few, but people are really stepping up at this time and they're really helping and doing what they can. And it's nice to see people take these leadership roles. So I want you to know that I really appreciate that and I support that. At the SAU office, Lois has done a nice job at the leadership as well and Lois DK has done a great job leading SPED. And that woman over there, I just needed to talk about her. She has done a fabulous job helping all of us through this crisis with unexpected, unanticipated budgeting that we can't budget for. But we, she's managing and helping us and helping all the leadership team with the budgeting and she's just doing a fabulous job. So I wanted to share that. I could thank you for your support and have a good night.
Thank you, Tim.
Thanks, Jim.
Do you want to bring the nurses first or the leadership?
I think we're gonna, we're gonna walk you through this presentation, if that's okay? And they'll come up when they're, when it's their turn.
Okay.
Is that all right?
Yeah.
All right. So we're, we want to, at this time, I'm so happy the leadership team is here tonight. I really appreciate them. Again, once again, I've asked and once again, they've delivered. I appreciate them being here tonight. So we, as promised, said that we were going to revisit what school looks like after the first trimester. We know the school, the school first trimester does not end until that first week in December, December 4th. But we are starting to think about second trimesters. So tonight, I wanted to give you an overview and I want you to hear from many of these key people that do have leadership roles. As you know, with the pandemic, as you've heard this evening, our focus continues to be on the safety and the well-being of everyone. That is first and foremost. What does that mean? That means that we are adhering to all CDC guidelines. We ask that everybody wear their masks. And we ask that everyone maintain, when possible, six feet of social distancing. We also are doing deep cleaning in between the Cohort A and Cohort B. We also are encouraging hygiene's by our students. And we also have daily screenings for our staff as well as all students. And we thank our parents for a. all students, and we thank our parents for assisting us with those screeners, we know, again, it's one more thing to your daily morning routine, but we have to do that in order to ensure the safety of everyone, so thank you for everyone for doing that. We continue to be apprised of the national state and district COVID-19 updates, and we know that unfortunately, those COVID numbers are on a rise, not just nationally, but in the state of New Hampshire, and specifically in, and unfortunately, in Hampton. We keep present mind of what's going on in the schools at the dashboard level, as well as what's going on in our seacoast, and continuing to have conversations with my colleagues in the southeast and portion of the state, those superintendents, so we do communicate quite frequently, at least once or twice a month. I am delighted, as was mentioned previously, that we are in Week 10 of this hybrid model, that is in large part due to everyone, and we couldn't do it without everybody, it really takes everyone doing his or her part in order to ensure the safety of everyone, you only need to look at what's going on around the state, around the country, to the north, to the south, where we're seeing school closures. We, knock on wood, I do it every day, every day kids are in schools is a great day for our community, and I mean that sincerely. At this time, we have, we have had five student cases, and we have had four staff cases, we have been very fortunate with the hybrid model that there has been no impact to school closing. I am convinced that our blended learning model, which is a hybrid, has hugely been instrumental in all of that, and you're going to hear just in a bit from our nurses that are going to talk a little more about that. We recognize the importance of face-to-face learning with our students, and that is critically important to us, we also know that we limit the amount of staff and students on our site every day, we reduce our risk by 50% with this hybrid model, which is again, another plus for what we're doing. The hybrid model also allows for greater opportunity for physical distancing of six feet, it limits the amount of students on a bus, it also allows for smaller class size, which facilitates personalized learning and differentiation, it allows for skill reinforcement, project-based learning on those remote and home days as well. In between the two cohorts, we are allowed, we can have that deep cleaning that we know is critically important as we think about keeping our building clean and safe. We've had a focus on social-emotional well-being of our students on Wednesdays, we're hearing from some students, it's the highlight of the week on sometimes, so we're getting some really good feedback on that. We've been able to closely progress monitor our students, given the small class size, we've had our fall assessments where we're able to see where kids are, so we know exactly what we need to do to support their learning and their track of progress. This hybrid model allows for easier pivoting, whether we decide that we need to be remote or we need to be full in-person, the hybrid allows us to do that. I want to provide you with a little bit of a status check, so what's happening with regard to since the beginning of the year, because I think people want to know that? We do mask breaks outside, Hampton Academy is having lunch outside when it's possible, we've seen improvements with our screening processes, we know that the nurses have been vigilant, diligent, and there's been follow-through with administrator support on that end as well. We know that when students are in school, we reduce their travel time, as was said earlier, students are not conjugating in large spaces for the most part, or whenever possible, they are not in large spaces, we do not currently use our art music, our art music, our gyms, we do not use the libraries, we do not use our computer labs, our students for the most part are staying in their spaces, and teachers are traveling. Students are staying in their cohort at all times, and they do not mix, they stay with their small group of peers that they're with. And we know that thanks to the federal government, that all students are entitled to free breakfast and lunch every day until June 30th, another great thing. Custodians have enhanced frequency of in-depth cleaning and compounded by deep cleaning twice a week in between the cohorts, mobile devices have been updated, every student and staff member now has access to a device, we have increased services for students who require more support in school as determined by guidelines. As mentioned, Wednesdays continue to be a day of building relationships, connections, and ensuring the well-being of our students, we continue to offer additional resources, support, and professional development to all members of our community, including our students, our parents and staff, you'll hear a little bit more about that. We have, again, administered all fall assessments to our remote students, as well as our hybrid students, and of course, we've begun to offer student-based targeted support to all of those students, whether they are remote or they are hybrid. We are convinced that we are seeing success with this blended learning hybrid model under the circumstances of a pandemic, we know it is not ideal, but a pandemic is not ideal. I want to now turn it over to the nurses, who are really going to speak specifically about what they have seen, what's happening at the state level, they continue to meet weekly, not only with me, but also the Department of Health and Human Services with Dr. Chan and Dr. Daly, to keep on the forefront of what is happening in New Hampshire and around the state, so I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Connolly, Mrs. Pietrus, and Mrs. Brand, and I do at this time owe a debt of gratitude to them, as they are really our frontline workers, and they have been hugely instrumental in keeping everyone safe, so a big thank you to them, and thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you very much, Dr. Costa, thank you for having us, is this on, I don't know if this is even working, but to second what you had just discussed, I do believe, we do believe the hybrid model is working well for Hampton at this time, I wanted to give an overview of the details of the hybrid model, so basically, we have our cohorts A and B, Cohort A meets Mondays and Tuesdays, Cohort B is on Thursdays and Fridays, each classroom has a maximum of 12 students, currently, Center School has eight to 10 students per cohort, Marston School has seven to 11 students per cohort, and Hampton Academy will have six to 12 students per cohort. Students will participate, they participate in the remote learning on the off days as outlined earlier, and Wednesdays, as we know, are used for deep cleaning day, which has been very instrumental in helping to stop the spread of COVID. Deep cleaning and disinfecting is done when staff and students are not in the building, and this Wednesday timeframe also gives us a great opportunity to connect, the nurses are very grateful that we have the opportunity to meet weekly with Dr. Costa, 8 o'clock, every Wednesday morning, we're on for just about an hour, and then we have the opportunity to stay on the call after Dr. Costa exits, so we can discuss specific circumstances that might relate to each one of our schools, so it's been, it's been really a good use of our time, and then at the end of the day on Wednesdays, we are able to do those New Hampshire weekly calls with our state epidemiologists, and, you know, we gather a lot of information from that, it changes week to week sometimes, sometimes it's a little bit redundant from what we've heard from the previous week, but Mrs. Pietrus even said today, gee, I'm kind of bummed tomorrow's a holiday, we're not going to have our meeting, because there's just so much going on that we want to, we want to know more, we're working as a team, we take turns writing the notes, we submit the notes to Dr. Costa, so that we're getting current, accurate information, which has been great. So reasons why this model is working, first, it does allow for the distancing, the desks are placed six feet apart, we have the spacing when we have the hybrid model for these desks, this saves the potential of the classroom teacher and all of the students needing to potentially quarantine from one whole class. A good example of when this was crucial to slowing the spread was when we had a case at Marston School, the student was confirmed positive, the nurse, myself, worked with the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services, and determined the need for contact tracing, due to the fact that in this particular classroom, the desks were even greater than six feet apart, they were probably closer to seven, because I went and looked and measured and interviewed the teacher, and they were spaced apart, greater than six feet in this particular room, it was a nice big classroom, and the teacher was very diligent about having her students keep their masks on, so it was really only necessary to have the ill child isolate and only one other student who was a friend with her outside playing on the playground, we determined that she should be quarantined, and this was actually, you know, after talking with the state, so that pretty much saved the whole entire class, the rest of the class, from having to quarantine. Second, the hybrid model allows for social distancing, we can stagger our dismissals, and students at Hampton Academy will be able to safely congregate indoors during snack and lunchtime as the cold weather approaches, following state guidelines, individual desks are placed eight feet apart in the dining hall, allowing for the students to stay in their cohorts, but still socialize and maintaining that social-emotional wellness. And third, this allows for relocation of students, per nurse judgment, if and when a classmate becomes symptomatic and needs to be dismissed for COVID tests, okay, so we've been sending lots of kids for COVID tests, okay, I'm going to guesstimate, I'm in the 50s at this point, low 50s to mid 50s on how many kids I've sent for tests, just at the Marston School, but this allows us to relocate if needed, so we take everything on a case-by-case basis, so if we have a child who's being dismissed to have a COVID test because they have a headache, and they don't normally get headaches, okay, well, is that need to evacuate? Probably not, but if we have another child who's going for a COVID test, who might have upper respiratory symptoms, and is coughing and sneezing and taking their mask off, and yes, we might need to move that class to another classroom. So with the hybrid model, we have that opportunity because we have the space, we have an adjacent classroom that might be empty, that we can quickly and easily move that class in there if needed, and then the other room is disinfected immediately, so that allows for a little flexibility there, and then finally, it provides adequate time for case-by-case investigations and contact tracing to be performed, for example, if we had a student in Cohort B who becomes symptomatic on Thursday, we have the opportunity to have that student tested for COVID-19 and ensure that that student is negative prior to their return the following week, and not only, not only student and staff contact tracing, but additional substitutes, bus drivers, issues could occur over the weekend, and the hybrid model allows time before that Cohort B student returns back to school, so it does allow us time to do that contact tracing, run up, you know, maybe bounce the situation off the state and say, what do you think about this, where do we need to go with it, so it gives us ample time to make sure that we're returning safely to school. So, and also, finally, the hybrid model allows symptomatic persons who are quarantined to miss less days, so that if they are symptomatic and they're sent home, they're still able to join their online learning, for, you know, if we were doing a five-day, let's say we were doing five days, you have a child who's being quarantined, they're missing the five days of learning, at least if they're quarantining for 14 days, they're going to miss their in-person days, two days a week, but they're still able to do their hybrid, or their remote work, I should say, the other two days, so it allows for learning as well. So I was going to turn it over to Karen for some more statistics, unless anyone has any questions about what I've discussed.
How about COVID, who pays for the COVID testing? If you tell students that they have to go for COVID testing?
That's a great question, yeah.
That's, yeah.
Most insurances will pay, I had to have my own son tested two weeks ago, I haven't seen a bill yet, but I just gave him my insurance card at Convenient MD, however, some families are running into barriers with these tests, because we, I have gotten a couple of reports of families who didn't have insurance, who are going to Convenient MD, and they were saying they were being charged, I think it was $165 upfront, and then they had to fill out paperwork and try to get reimbursed, which shouldn't be the way, it should not be the way, so I've only heard that from two people, but I think if you do have insurance, most insurances will pay for it, CVS does the test for free if you're over 12 years old, if you're under 12, so it might be okay for some Hampton Academy students to take advantage of that, but the reason for that is you have to self-swab, so they won't, they won't take anyone through the drive-through under 12, so, but the National Guard, there are two free testing sites, one's in Londonderry and one is in Concord, New Hampshire, and I actually had a situation where I had a parent who was unable to drive for medical reasons, and the National Guard came right to her house, and her son thought it was the coolest thing ever. So there are some options, you just have to get creative, and these are the things we're working with the state with, like, we need more resources for our families on the seacoast, because to go to Londonderry from here is a haul, to go to Concord is a ride, it's, you know, and especially if you have a sick child, are you going to want to drive an hour, you know, to get them swabbed? So, yeah, but there are resources, and, you know, we just have to make sure we're tapping into all of them, so, yeah.
Good.
Yep.
Question, which test do you look at, the rapid test or the swab?
Okay, well, the PCR, they will not do a rapid test on a child or a person who is asymptomatic, so for most symptomatic people, if you have one or two symptoms, they will do the rapid test, if you do not, and you've been exposed to someone potentially with COVID-19, and you say, I want to get a test just to make sure I don't have it, but I don't have any symptoms, then they'll do a send-out test.
I do understand that the rapid test is 60% accurate?
Actually, it's a little more accurate than that, it's in the 80s, I just, like I just had one done for my son, and she, the practitioner was telling me the rapid test was actually more accurate than the send-out test, so she said like 89%, I think she told me, so, and he was fully symptomatic too, so, and it came back negative, thank goodness, but, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, you're all set, anybody else? Okay, good. Karen?
So as we all know, Rockingham County has greatly increased the amount of positive cases, in New Hampshire, there's 10 counties, as of last Wednesday, when we had our weekly partnership with the state, seven of those counties, including Rockingham, went from Level 2, which is a moderate level, to the red level, which is three, there's three levels, there's minimal, moderate, and substantial, which is basically green, yellow, red, up until last week, we were yellow, in one week, we went from yellow to red, so seven counties last week, as of today, nine counties, so I believe just one, which is Carroll County, is still in the yellow, so basically, all of New Hampshire is now substantial level, which means there's a higher chance of transmission, so all of the hybrid parameters, layers of protection that we're using is greatly helping keeping our school transmissions down. And I'm just going to reread what we've done as a district to provide layers of protection to help our kids and our staff and the subs and everyone involved, it's quite a list. Social, physical distancing of six feet, keeping the small cohort groups is vital without mixing anyone, assigned seating is being done in case there is a question of contact tracing, the teachers know exactly where the kids sit, so we can figure out what needs to be done, limit the number of people in the close contact, universal masking is being done, it's harder at the smaller age levels because of their developmental, but our kids at the Hampton Academy are really sticking to that, and they're doing a phenomenal job, staggering dismissals at the end of the day is helping, again, because we're keeping them distant, and we're keeping them in small groups, regular and frequent disinfecting and cleaning. Regular and frequent disinfecting and cleaning of the work areas. Kids are doing great washing their hands, using hand sanitizers. We're avoiding singing in the classroom, and if there is singing, we try to do it at least a minimum of eight to 10 feet apart. Minimizing the amount of time spent in the hallway and getting a flow so that they're going this way and coming back this way versus just mingling. We are able to isolate at each school if there is one child that presents with potential symptoms of COVID-19. Because we are doing the hybrid model and we have half the amount of students, we are able to provide an isolation room until we figure out, call the parents, and get them dismissed for testing. The COVID health screenings is huge, and we're also instituting for staff, as well as the students, the travel mandate from the Governor Sununu, that if you do travel outside of New England, we expect you that on the day you return, you must home quarantine 14 days. And that is extended to staff as well. And that is keeping everyone's level of transmission at a minimum.
Excuse me. I didn't want to interrupt you. Can you repeat that again about if you travel and when you get back?
Yes.
And perhaps say it a little louder for the folks at home?
So it's a governor, governor mandate supported by Department of Public Health that if you travel outside of any of the New England states, when you return home, you must home quarantine for a full 14 days before you go out in public. There are instances that on day 13 and 14, people do become symptomatic. So it is important to quarantine the full 14 days. If you have relatives coming outside of New England and is staying in your home, the visitor, the visiting relatives or friends are expected to quarantine for 14 days. The host family does not need to do that unless someone becomes symptomatic. So is that clear?
Thank you.
Okay. You're welcome. And then I did do a little research just because of my curiosity, how our neighboring county in Essex, Amesbury, Salisbury, Newburyport, and how that may affect us. Their levels are even higher, if you can imagine, than Rockingham. They're almost 1.5% higher cases than we are presently having. So with them possibly coming over into our Seabrook Hampton area is putting our area at greater risk. In a matter of six days, I did a little research, Exeter, Hampton, Portsmouth, Rochester, they've increased anywhere from five to 20 people in a matter of six days. So there is a higher level of community transmission. It's normal because now the weather has become colder, except for the last two, three beautiful sunny days. As we get colder and we are all more stuck inside, the level of transmission is greatly increased. Keeping them at hybrid level, where we can get half the amount of kids and keep their cohort small, is what I believe and my colleagues believe is helping us immensely, keeping our kids and our staff safe. And the staff, again, it goes to, the bus drivers are also affected. I had a case where a positive bus driver, and luckily, I had time to do some, some tracing to find out and do what we needed to do. The subs, the paras, this involves everybody. And I'm really proud of how everyone is stepping up to the plate and being honest and notifying us nurses when, when they do get a positive relative. What do I do? Do I have to stay home? Can I come in? How long? It's a community effort and it's working. Any, any questions for us?
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
You know, I, I too would like to commend people that have been upfront and honest about their, you know, their, their, you know, contact and, you know, people that have got COVID. It's not easy. It's not easy to come forward and say, hey, I've got it, or I was in touch with someone who had, you know, I mean, it's, that takes a lot of courage, and we appreciate that because that's looking out for the health and safety of all of us. And we appreciate that so much.
A question for Lois.
I think Amy's going to wrap it up too, just so you know. There's one more piece to this presentation, but I'm happy to answer your question, Brian.
No, no, that's fine. Let's do that because the question's going to be based on the kids.
All right, you're good? All right. Okay. Go for it.
But let's let the presentation finish.
Okay.
Okay. First off, I want to apologize for any sound quality issues. Couple things going on here tonight. We weren't expecting this many people here, so we turned the volume down because last month, we heard there was feedback and ringing in this very technical aspect of all this technology going, including phones and computers and everything, that this was the best way to bring down the ringing in the background on TV. And unfortunately, it ends up being, so it's not as loud in here. So I just ask anybody that comes up to talk to please talk as loud as you can so everybody can hear. And school board members, if you can just remember to speak into the microphone, that helps the people at home because that's how they hear, is through the microphone at home. Now, getting back to the, the presentation tonight in professional development, what I wanted to first talk about is what we're doing in the district to help the teachers, staff, and parents and students in this new environment that they're having to live in. So one of the first things we decided was we needed to develop a place where parents, teachers, students, even administrators could go to get support when they needed it 24/7. So we developed a website called saun90help.org. And there, there's a button where you can link, click on a link, it gets you to whatever is appropriate for you. If you're a teacher, you click on teacher. Parent, click on parent, and so on and so forth. It then brings you to a page where you can search any topic, and we're, remember, we're building this as, as we go. So we're constantly adding content onto the website. So when we do a training, which I'll talk about next, in the next part of mine, it gets out of there as well. So that, we, we are finding links to already created training online, and we put links there, or we create it ourselves. So one of the ways we're creating ourselves is David Hansberry on Wednesdays. The nice thing about having that Wednesday deep cleaning is that my team is still here helping to support repaired devices and do some of that work during the week. And Dave takes a break from that when he can and either does whole district training, sometimes more specific. Last week, he was doing training with all the secretaries on how to update the website. There's different training that we do, and when we can record it, we record that and put it on, on our saun90help.org to help people with that as well. Keith actually just did one last week on how to prepare for the open house. So we're doing that. We also have, I'm sorry, I just closed my notes here. The Demonstrative Success. So we've, we've hired Demonstrative Success for the year to help provide some of that online content as well for staff, where they can go and watch webinars that are going on. We have New Hampshire Listens. So we're using New Hampshire Listens to better make sure that we're, we're teaching equitably. So there's training for all of us, and not just the teachers, but administration, making sure that we're, we're, we're meeting those needs of all of our students. We have a staff, I'm sorry, the school counselors have created a website. So there's links on their websites and on the district website to the school counselors to a, a dynamic website they've created with all kinds of resources for parents there as well. And we also have a staff wellness opportunity through Dr. Les Masterman and Stacy Picard called Unwind Time that's also available for us, for people to use. So we've, we've started to create a whole bunch of resources available to, to people if they need it. Anybody have any questions for me?
So that would go to staff wellness, this unwind time that the psychologists have done to try to give the staff something to help them kind of cope with the stresses-
Relax. It's a very stressful time for all of us, right?
Right.
So it's helping you remember to, to take care of yourself as well, right?
I would hope that staff is taking advantage of that.
Great.
It was a, if you recall, this summer, we were, did the pro-qual survey. We had, all staff were invited to participate in, in a survey that looked at burnout and job satisfaction. That came out of our back-to-school, if you remember, our back-to-school roadmap. So the staff engaged in the survey over the summer, and as a follow-up to the survey, now inviting staff into what we call Unwind Time, where just another venue for coming together and to recognize the stress of teaching in a pandemic and how can we support each other.
But as a former teacher slash administrator, I know how hard it is for a staff member to acknowledge that I need this. I need to unwind. I need to take advantage of this. So I would encourage any and all staff members, whether you think you need it or not, just do it. Just do it because it will make you feel so much better.
I try to meditate a little bit of time during the day, just stop and relax and think. Anything else for me?
Thank you, Greg.
David?
Hi. Good evening, everyone. I'm, I'm here to give you an update on the extracurricular activities. So on a, on a night when we're postponing things and we're, we're delaying things, I want to know you, there's, there's some opportunities for kids that we can do very safely, we can do virtually, and they're really important to the, the culture and the climate of the school. You know, our, our school takes pride in Shark News. And Shark News is, is viewed in every single classroom. At Center School and Marston School, they watch it. We send it to them weekly. It really does bond our school, three schools together, and it brings pride to those students who, who work on that program. So we're going to try to bring that back. We're doing it right now in a very, during the day, not after school at all, because we're just pulling kids outside and, and doing these little bits. And quite honestly, we're on our fourth show, so I'm very proud of the, the kids and the teachers who've done that. School yearbook is really important. You know what? You're not going to remember in 30 years was, there was no yearbook because there was a pandemic. But if you have one, you will remember. So we think that's really important to offer a yearbook program for our students. Additionally, Mrs. Reno and Mrs. Gray would like to offer a band and chorus. They can do that virtually. They can meet with the small groups of kids. And again, that's not, not high risk, medium risk. There's no risk to this. It's just, it makes great sense because, as we know, music is, is key to a lot of things we do in life. And, 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 and we really believe in our drama program. And the teachers came together and they made, they made presentations and suggestions, and, and we really believe that a drama program can be done. And it can be done virtually because we've already got the script. With your approval, we'd like to do a Christmas carol. It will be done virtually and it will be sometime in late, late December, just before Christmas. But Mrs. Clark and, and her students are looking forward to that. And finally, the, the oratorical is a big part of our eighth grader, eighth graders' experience at Hampton Academy. That's something that happens in the spring. We don't have to decide tonight, but it is one of those things that kids remember for the rest of their life when, when they participate in a program like that, and we'd like to offer that as well. There are a lot of things that aren't happening, but, but I'm not here to talk about those. But as the year goes on, if something comes forward, we, you know, we'd like an opportunity to look at that too. Kids, if you know what we did after school pre-COVID, there was 100 kids in each one of our buildings, whether they were at Girls on the Run or they were at Lego program over at Center School. But the school day doesn't, doesn't typically end at, at 2:30 or 3 o'clock. We realize there's limitations, but we thought it was important to bring some programs back that, that did give kids an opportunity to do something after school. You have questions for me?
I don't have a question. I just have a comment that I hope that maybe you would look at some way, the sixth graders missed out on their sixth grade environmental school experience. And you and I both know that is a pretty big highlight of, of their middle school. So maybe your staff could look at some way in the spring to find a way, it doesn't have to be go away overnight, but some way to, to do that program here at school with the sixth graders.
I think they've already been thinking about that, to be honest with you.
Okay.
You know, they, they missed it as much as the kids do.
I know.
This is the opportunity for them to bond as a group and become a learning community. And that was taken away, like many things, from many people. So we make the best of it, and yes, we absolutely will.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you, Dave.
Mr. Sadler?
As you know, we're not taking field trips this year for a number of safety concerns. But we're fortunate because our creative staffs at all the schools are starting to explore virtual field trips. Many of these have little to no cost associated with them. Strawberry Bank, for example, for our fourth graders, is offering a virtual field trip that does a lot of the same things we do in person, without that in-person flair you get when you're, you're over there. The Hampton Fire Department was very gracious. We always celebrate Fire Safety Month, especially in third grade. They took kids on a virtual tour of the fire station. Some of the safety officers over there walked around while the kids were on their computers and, and showed them the various aspects of the fire department and what they should be doing to keep themselves safe and their families safe at home. So while we can't necessarily travel places, I know our staff is still trying to enrich and extend the learning that's taking place in the classroom and doing many things, as Dave said, virtually, and that includes traveling around the world from, from the seat of their desk on their computer. So it's, it's just great that we're still able to do some of these things for our students to enhance what's going on in our classrooms and our curriculum.
Thanks, Amy.
Thank you, Nathan. Substitutes?
So, so one of the things that I think will be important for us to be thinking about, I think, to the point that the nurses made, we know that should anyone travel, there would need to be a two-week quarantine. We also know that COVID numbers are rising, and we were challenged to find guest teachers' substitutes prior to COVID-19. We're, we're even more challenged. We've been, we've had our ad out for quite some time. We just want to encourage those who might be interested in substitute teaching out there, please don't hesitate to pick up an application. I would like to, at some point, revisit our, our present board policy, and perhaps under COVID-19, we could rethink about the requirements. As I know, I had a chance to speak with Superintendent at our, just right over, right across the way over there about their requirements, and I know that there's been some changes around requirements of a bachelor's degree. So that might be something that we could, as a policy committee, Peppa and Andrea, we could look at in the next couple of weeks and then bring it back in December to see if we might be able to loosen the guidelines on that, even if it were just during COVID-19. But I'll just want to have that on your radar, is that is an area that we continue to be challenged by, and I know that the principals are subbing in classrooms at this time. I, I know that Mr. Sadler was in for a number of teachers, as was Mrs. Hughes, Mr. O'Connor, and I bet Mrs. Hopper and Mr. Landon were. So these, these are, these are real concerns with substitutes. So just to have that on your radar, that that continues to be one of the challenges that is coming up as a result of COVID-19. Those that would typically substitute are just not feeling safe enough to step foot into the building as they would be at an age that, or they just are not feeling comfortable. That's all I'd say, for whatever the reason might be.
Or they're being picked up by other school districts.
That could be too. So something for us to be thinking about that we can look at for December and, and bring that back with a recommendation around the current policy. You heard from Mr. Lassard earlier this evening. You heard from Mr. Doherty as well. So as I continue on in my presentation, you know, at this time, the SAU 90 leadership team recommends that we stay the course with our hybrid model. We will serve, we, as part of that, we would be willing to survey our parents regarding their intentions for the second trimester, which begins on December 7th, and we will make every attempt to accommodate requests, given staffing and the size of classrooms. We will continue to monitor the situation, and parents will be notified weekly of updates through the SAU office. As you know, I do a weekly letter out to our families. I also notify families whenever there is a COVID case in our schools. That's something we've been doing. And of course, we will review the current model at the end of trimester two, when we anticipate cold and flu numbers diminishing. What you should be aware of is that there are many districts, sadly, around the state, around the nation, that have decided because of the traveling that is expected between Thanksgiving and the December holidays and New Year's, to close your schools and go fully remote until after Martin Luther King Day. I believe that Hampton has done a phenomenal job working cooperatively with us, and I think we are committed to this hybrid model. We are going to do everything we can to stay open under this hybrid model. So we would like to do that. That is our recommendation, and we would obviously take any questions, comments at this time.
Before we have questions and comments, I think we should open it up to the public.
Absolutely.
Okay. So I will repeat, the public can join this electronic meeting by calling 1-857, correct me if I'm wrong, Greg, back there, 444-0744, and use the code 649427. And Greg, if you're listening, I'm hoping this is turned on and we have it set up correctly.
We're ready to go. I just want to say if people have a question they'd like to ask, just so we know, we can unmute first and give them a chance to ask their question. You should hit star five in order to raise their hand. Then we will see that they have a question ready, and I will announce to you who the person is based upon the names that they leave, and unmute them to ask their question.
Okay. Has anyone called in yet?
We have two people in. Neither one has their hand raised for a question, so I will let you know if I see a hand get raised, if anybody would like to ask a question. Once again, it's star five to raise your hand, and then we'll know that you have a question, and I will unmute you, and you can ask your questions.
Okay. I'm going to be a little generous in this timeframe here so that if people have comments, they have some time to make them. so that if people have comments, they have some time to make them. Yes, come right up front, Amy. We have a person here first.
Hello.
Hi.
Amy Murphy. I am a teacher, fifth grade school. I'm also the vice president of the Teachers Union.
You may want to lower that. Yeah, there you go.
Sorry. So yeah, so I'm a fifth grade teacher and vice president of the Teachers Union. I wanted to extend a tremendous thank you to all of you for everything that you're doing and everybody out here to ensure the safety and well-being of our students. We love being in school with our kids. The kids are happy. We know that it's not an ideal situation. We understand that. But we really appreciate all of the consideration in what we should do next. And we would agree that continuing in on this model would really be in the best interest of everybody in the school community. So thank you for all of your research and your work and keeping us up to date and making really important and difficult decisions that's best for everybody involved.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you, Amy.
And while we're waiting here, I did have a question for Lois.
Sure.
If we were to continue this for trimester two, what board meeting would we use to revisit this again so that parents would have an idea?
So if you look at the calendar, we could either do... I would recommend February 9 or March 9. Whichever one you would prefer. Those are the next two meetings, February 9 or March 9.
When does trimester two end?
Not till the 12th.
Of?
March.
But if we did it on March 9, that wouldn't give people much time to turn around. We should probably plan on...
February 9.
Revisiting it February 9?
Yep, yep.
I'm just throwing that out there, if any folks...
And people that have gone fully remote, can they, if we choose to stick with the plan that we... the hybrid model that we're doing now, can they have their students come back in to the hybrid?
So, well, as you know, this is a very delicate balance. And the principals would be able to tell you this, that we did everything we could to accommodate every request for the first trimester, whether that was going from Cohort A to Cohort B. We would do everything we could to accommodate, given the constraints that are there.
Right.
You know, we have a limited amount of staff. We have some limitations, but we would do our best. We have some room for making changes.
Okay.
But we would have to prioritize, given the limitations out of there.
Well, that's good clarification. Because there may be some people out there thinking, oh, well, you know, it was going okay, but I'm going to put my kids in. And you know, you're right, there are some limitations. And there's some things you have to think about as you adopt, you know, the next trimester and who you can have. Right, okay, that's good.
Mr. Lamparis, do we have any... anyone?
Last?
Yeah.
There is nobody with their hand up. There's only one person still in.
Okay.
And she has not raised her hand, Barbara Lynn. So I would assume there is no comment from the public.
Okay. Then I think we have a lot of enough time. I'm going to close the public comment. And we've heard the superintendent make a recommendation. We've heard from various staff members. Can I get a motion from someone on the board? Andrea?
I'll make a motion that, starting with trimester two, that we continue to stay the course with hybrid and the two cohorts, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and the Wednesday being the remote learning for all.
Okay, second? Second?
Second.
Seconded, Ginny. So basically, pretty much as is.
Right.
Okay. Discussion?
I have a number of questions.
No, I'm ready to go.
Frank?
I have a number of questions that I'd like to...
Okay, ask them one at a time.
Yep. First question is regarding kids that have tested positive in the 14-day quarantine. What accommodations? I know they're there for the two days. What about the other two days? I know they go two days remote, two days in school. Those two days in school which they're missing, what is the plan on that?
You know, it's a great question, and it's a case-by-case scenario situation. I know that the teachers are hugely responsive in terms of helping kids to catch up, to give them the work in advance. And remember, when kids are out for two weeks for quarantining, they only miss, out of 10 days, four days. So those other six days, they are getting their instruction, which is a huge benefit to this model. So that is a plus. And I know that there has been work that is sent home either before or afterwards so that there is made... There's every attempt to ensure that we catch these children up. Our teachers are very responsible for the children in front of them. And we know they go above and beyond to ensure that if somebody is out for any illness, right? They're going to do what they can to make sure that the child doesn't fall behind. They're going to do what they can.
Okay.
Another question?
The second one is regarding your substitute situation. I don't think the policy needs to be changed if we do a temporary adjustment to that policy. Because the policy is basically set in stone that you have to have a bachelor's. But I think we can basically make a motion to change that, to open it up to help you without making changes to the policy and then going back, change the policy again. So that may help you.
That would be great.
And the final question I have is, now that you have the first trimester done and you had kids in Cohort A and Cohort B, have you looked at reversing the situations? Because you had people in Cohort A, Monday, Tuesday, and then Thursday, Friday, just reverse the situation so it changes the scenario?
You know, that was brought to our attention. And the issue with that is, we know that families have turned their lives upside down for those in-person days and those at-home days. We know that daycares have been set up. People are helping one another out. I know the PTA is setting up daycare assistance. So lots of efforts have been made to really set this up. I know that some parents were concerned in terms of the amount of days. But as we looked at the calendar, the calendar is pretty equitable. When you look at, you know, the Thanksgiving, we missed the Thursday, Friday, and you think about the Monday holidays we missed, the days are equitable. We would keep them as it is, given all that it took to get the schedule as it was in place. And I believe the principal's leadership team has talked about this extensively. And they said, for all the work it took to get this set up for everyone, for teachers, for parents, for the community, we would keep it as is.
Thank you.
All right, my last question. I have one more that just came up. But the final thing, is there a plan set that in case you had to go completely remote, that you could pull the trigger if Cohort 19 escalates during second trimester?
So, and the nurses came way in. So when we would go fully remote is when you have what they call multiple clusters. A cluster is defined as three or more cases stemming from one area, one classroom, one contact trace. So if you have three clusters, right? You would more than likely need to close the school for two weeks. You may, if you have one cluster that was contained to one classroom, you could have that classroom quarantined or that cohort quarantined for two weeks. The hybrid offers us lots of possibilities, right? So we could have a cohort. A cohort class, they could quarantine. You could have a school quarantine. You could have Cohort A quarantine. This hybrid model, by reducing your risk by 50%, really gives you lots of options for keeping more kids in school. It also gives you more options for quarantining. But when you get to the point of multiple clusters in a school, that's where you get to quarantine for the school. Please correct me if I'm wrong. I've been listening. See, I've been listening to you. We've talked about this. Because we did have a situation that we were getting concerned where, as you know, there were five cases. But because they were all unrelated, we really didn't have a cluster. So we really didn't have a need to quarantine a class, a school, or a cohort. We've been, like I said, we're knocking on wood. It really does give you the options. And I hope that, I hope for everybody at home, I hope that's clear. Multiple clusters forces a quarantine or a shutdown. Does that make sense?
Makes sense to me. Further discussion on the motion?
Last question, just came up on a...
You said that last time, last question.
This is it. How has the issue developed with Sacred Heart regarding our scenario? You know, in other words, they're there four days a week.
Yeah. Is there anything regarding Sacred Heart that is impacting what's happening with us?
Not to my knowledge.
No, okay.
Further discussion? Okay, so it has been moved that we continue in the hybrid model until, what was the date, Lois, that we revisit?
We would, on February 9, we'd revisit.
Would revisit it. All those in favor? Unanimous, 5-0-0. We have, I know in your packet, some board policies. And yes, feel free to go, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. We have some policies to look at, if I can find them.
Really, it's the calendar.
They're on...
The calendar. Do you want to look at the calendar from the spare?
Let's look at the calendar.
Calendar, which is in your packet on page 10.
Page 10?
Yep.
Calendar, page 10.
Okay. Did you find it, Pepper, page 10? Calendar? I'm getting a sense that this is fairly similar to the one that we have. And I'm getting a sense that you've met with association folk.
Yep.
And...
And SAU 21 as well.
Right.
Yep.
Okay, motion?
I'll make a motion to...
Moved, Andrea? Seconded Frank? Discussion? Not much needed. All those in favor? 5-0. Okay. Can we go to the...
Can we talk about snow days real quickly?
Yes.
So as you know, maybe the silver lining... Maybe this was a good time to become a superintendent. I hear the most difficult job a superintendent has is calling snow day.
Right.
Well, the silver lining with what's going on is we really would not need to have a snow day as if the power were in place, we could do remote learning. So I have spoken with Hampton leadership team, and we are prepared to have conversations about what snow days would look like in remote if we were not able to bring the children into school. So I just wanted to let you know, let the parents know, get your thoughts on that, if you were okay with that. And just let the parents know that that's our plan moving forward, that if we had to have a really bad weather day, we would not have to call a snow day, but it would be a remote day for everyone.
So Channel 9 News would announce it would be a remote learning day for everyone?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep.
Just so long as teachers are, you know, anticipating and saying, make sure you bring home your Chromebooks.
Right, we've talked about that. And we said that we would make sure that they did that.
Yeah.
And the teachers, we want them to obviously have this in their minds at this time. I had an opportunity, obviously, to talk to the principals and for them to have conversations with their staff and to obviously make sure teachers have some time to plan for that. Because again, that is, that's a pivot.
Right, but they can do it.
Yep.
They can do it.
I think we can make it meaningful.
Do you need a motion?
I was just going to say, do you need anything from us?
I don't think we do.
I don't think so either.
Just want to let you know and just to let the public know, right?
That's good.
Yep.
So if you turn to page 38, folks...
Frank has a comment.
One question on the calendar. I noticed that winter vacation is later this year.
It is always the week after President's Week. So President's Week, because February, the way the weeks fall, is on the 21st, which means it is the latest it would ever be, the 28th.
Right, that is late, but it is right, yeah.
We've already voted on it.
No, no, it's okay, I just...
Yeah, no, we looked at it as well, just so you know, we did.
So if you turn to page 38, there's a policy there. Is this a first or second read?
It is actually a first read. Because if you look at page 39, one of the things we had to do by law was to add the part that's in red. So we updated our policy to reflect a new legal requirement. And that's so that we... That it's in our policy that the district uses monitoring software, that one there.
And the other policy, which Lois just sort of talked about, is on page 42. And this is a first read. And your position on this was to change what, Lois?
If you look in that first paragraph and adding where it says "a qualified substitute", we would say, when possible, a qualified teacher is defined as someone who holds a bachelor's degree. So when it's possible, we would hire somebody with a bachelor's degree. And obviously, if it wasn't, like in COVID-19, we would change it. There is a different policy that some districts have adopted that looks like this. But we're, I'm happy to...
Well, if you think adding the words "when" or "wherever possible", a... Let's just leave it simple like that. And perhaps we can act on that tonight.
That would be great.
So I'm going to make a motion that we accept this policy with the... In the second sentence, instead of "a", it reads "wherever possible a", or "whenever possible", however it reads better. Can I get a second for that?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Frank. I don't think it needs much discussion. All those in favor?
Well, I do have some discussion.
Okay.
Just one part in the substitute pay. We have $13 an hour. Do you think that that should be raised to at least $15 because you're having difficulties? And that would make us more competitive within the area?
I was going to say that, too, Frank.
It wouldn't hurt.
Well, we didn't do that during the budget process.
Well, that's right, too.
However, it's a generic, you know, a guest amount for the year. It depends on how many substitutes we have next year.
It's not based on an hourly rate, correct?
Right, correct.
It's just a budgeted amount.
A budgeted amount.
We...
We guessed large. No, we didn't.
Well, are you going to put that in a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to amend the motion to raise the substitute rate to at least $15 an hour.
Okay, second?
Second.
Seconded, Ginny? Okay, it's pretty cut and dried. So we will change this in addition to "whenever possible" or whatever, and change that to $15 an hour. All those in favor? 5-0-0.
No, I abstain.
4-0-0. Yeah, you should abstain on that one. 4-0-1.
Thank you.
Okay, are we at minutes yet?
We are.
Okay, minutes of October 13?
I make a motion we accept the minutes of October 13.
Can I just... Should we designate that Pepper was part of the meeting virtually? Or do we...
I actually need a note.
Okay.
I don't think you should go to a last minute.
I don't know. Pepper, were you?
Yes.
Yes, she was here.
Yeah.
But tonight, I already know that.
No, I was thinking of the budget. I was talking about the budget.
So you were here at this one, Pepper, on the 13th?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, we don't need to do that. Somebody made a motion, Frank, made a motion to accept the minutes. Second?
Second.
Seconded by Pepper. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, zero. And then the non-public on October 13th?
I make a motion, we accept those as well.
Moved Frank, seconded Andrea. Much discussion, all those in favor? I'm going to make a motion to go into non-public.
Should we review the financial report?
We don't, yeah, I was just going to say, we don't have anything to do.
Well, I, I was going to talk to her about that in non-public.
Oh, you were going to talk to her, okay.
Yeah.
Then we can come out and discuss it.
Okay. Thank you, Amy.
Good night.
Thanks, Amy.
Thanks.
We get a roll call?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes. If we don't talk about it in non-public, when we'll come back out, we'll.
That's perfectly fine.
We will do it. Okay, I have a list of.
Now we got to make sure we're off.